All right, good evening. We are back in the council chambers. Let's hope we can stay in the council chambers. But this is the January 20th, 2021 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, so I did want to read a quick statement for the public. And that is, tonight, the city council is meeting in person as the council chambers are set up to ensure adequate and necessary social distancing measures can be followed. Because of the reduced capacity of our council chambers, and recognizing some residents will be more comfortable attending the meeting virtually, we continue to provide for public input via Zoom. Please visit our website at cottagegrovemn.gov, click on the Public Meeting Quick Links box, and then click on the January 20th, 2021 meeting. We want to be transparent, accessible, and inclusive, and we hope these measures will accommodate everyone who wishes to participate in our open and public meetings. So the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. I don't see anybody in the council chambers, and I'm not seeing anybody out on—well, I do see—is Paul, developer, okay? And I see Bonnie is now on there for later. So I don't see anybody else out there that wants to speak on open forum, going once, twice. All right, we'll go ahead and close. Open forum will move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
So we have—
Second?
So, motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I almost stopped to do the roll thing again. All right. Next is presentations. Number six, there aren't none tonight. Seven is consent calendar. Is there anything that council would like to pull on this evening's consent? I didn't see anything. If seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you're interested in anything that's on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Moving right along here, eight is approved dispersment. Eight is pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving to number nine, which is a public hearing, which we have this evening. The one public hearing that we have this evening is the Calarosa Sixth Edition, and Emily is going to walk us through this. So welcome to council, Emily.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bailey, members of the council. It feels like it's been quite a long time since I've been here. It's a little weird feeling, but it's very good, kind of trying to get back to normal, just a little bit. But it seems the only—I'll call it the exciting item on the agenda, I suppose, is the Inwood vacation, the right-of-way vacation, as a part of the final phase of the Calarosa development. And I feel like I'm not close enough to this microphone, maybe. So for those of you who are not familiar or need a quick reminder, the Calarosa development is just north of 65th Street, and on its north boundary, it does about Woodbury up there as well. So the Calarosa development did receive its initial approvals back in 2017, so it's been an ongoing project for about three years now. Again, the developer is Lennar Homes, so they are proposing their sixth and final phase, which does include the vacation of Inwood Avenue. So it's improved within the Cottage Grove portion, and as you go north into Woodbury, if you're not familiar, it is unimproved section there. We're okay. Okay. So this has been a conversation from the very beginning stages of this Calarosa development with the removal of Inwood Avenue, given the development was not proposing any lots to a but Inwood Avenue, so there really was no intent or need to keep that roadway as they would, just be backing up. And again, Woodbury is on board, given it is an unimproved section of roadway, as we moved to cross that border. I'm happy to pause if—
I think he's trying to work on it. I think I heard.
They're getting there.
Oh, maybe.
Let's see, if I continue on, but stop me if something's goofy. Anyhow, so the vacation will vacate the right-of-way, which, as you can see on this image, is just that westerly 33 feet of the actual roadway, which is owned as right-of-way. The easterly 33 feet is just a prescriptive easement, which does not need to be officially vacated. Again, as a part of this sixth and final phase, the developer will be responsible for the costs associated with removing the pavement and the base, and restoring and reseating that area of roadway. To give a little bit of a closer-up idea, I kind of broke it up into three sections of that right-of-way, and kind of where it will go, for lack of a better way to put it. So this yellow portion of Inwood will be retained by the city. The city does own the storm pond that was platted as a part of the Fifth Edition, so the city will retain that. And then this red portion here—I blew up the image—will be included in about four lots as a part of the Sixth Edition, so they'll just include that additional 33 feet in those four lots. And then on this north side, this blue little section here—I'll go to the next slide, it kind of explains a little bit better—but that blue portion will be maintained as right-of-way, and this will allow for this Woodbury resident who actually gains access in and out of their property on the Cottage Grove side of the border. So maintaining that right-of-way will allow the developer to install this temporary cul-de-sac as a part of the project, will allow that homeowner to continue to maintain access in and out of their property. Of course, they will only be able to go north through that unimproved section of Sunny Hill Drive. Again, Woodbury is on board, and will continue to plow and maintain that section of Sunny Hill Drive. And I'll just give a brief overview. Again, this is all a part and being triggered by the Calarosa Six final plat, which is their final phase of the Calarosa development, long time coming, but 86 single-family lots. I believe the average is about 70 foot wide, just the single-family homes on those lots. I will leave the recommendation before you. I know Mr. Tabone is available this evening, the developer as well, for any questions. I'm available, as well as Ryan Burfine, the city engineer.
One of the funny— One of the funny things is I'm messaging—they're having issues, no one's seeing it on the TV or just FYI. So a couple of people are responding to me, saying that it's a black screen. So they're not seeing any of the conversations, so I just wanted to mention that. I'm responding back, so. Yes, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Emily, thank you for the nice presentation. Not sure if you want to take this, or perhaps Ryan wants to. Earlier this year, when we initially talked about this development, we had a resident who came to us with some concerns about Inwood in particular, and the access off of Inwood Avenue into this subdivision. I'm sure you probably can recall some of those questions that she had. And then this summer, when Councilmember Mills and I did a kind of a Q and A in the park for people as part of the campaign season, the same resident came to us with those questions. One of the things I would like to make very clear, and I'm hoping you can help me with this, is whether or not what we just saw tonight is consistent with what we've been talking about since the outset of sort of this entire dialogue relative to that roadway. Because, of course, we've talked about easements, we've talked about right-of-way, we've talked about a portion of the roadway being used for public safety access, and I just want to make sure that we're very clear about what all of that means separately, and then what does that mean, you know, with all of it included. So can you perhaps just really clarify the nuts and bolts of all of that, please?
Yep. Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. So going back to the start of this development in 2016, 2017, when the concept plan was coming through, we had identified at that time that we need to look at this section of Inwood Avenue, and likely a portion of it could be vacated, with really the intent to realign it, kind of like we did with Ideal Avenue and the neighboring Pine Cliff development. So what we're doing here tonight is consistent with some of those earlier discussions, and then when we had the Calarosa East preliminary plat a couple of years ago, we did identify—we worked with Woodbury. You know, between the two comp plans, we don't see this as a major collector road. We don't need a larger roadway with no homes on it, it's just not needed in this area, it would be unnecessary. So with that, we are proposing this vacation north of Ravine Parkway, and what you really see is potentially with the Kemp property, that's just to the east, we've got this intersection with Inwood going south of Ravine Parkway, it could veer into the Kemp property, and then you'd have homes on both sides. So you'd have homes—the rear yards budding up to what used to be Inwood, and really their front yard would be Inwood in the Kemp property, and then it would connect into—as 60th Street goes east-west while on the border. And then working with Woodbury in the future, we will want some local street connections, you know, not major connections, but our cities will meet, so that's why we're maintaining that right-of-way as well, north of 60th Street in the blue, because you could have just a local street connection. So that's what we're really dealing with here tonight, and setting it up for the future. And then south of Ravine Parkway, we got a couple of things going on. One is that roadway section, which is being improved, there's a steep hill there that Lennar is in the process of fixing, it'll be completed next year. That provides the emergency access, secondary access for all those townhomes that are built. And then as you go further south, that's something that we're going to continue to—I want to say, deal with or manage into the future. We've got a lot of access points along 70th that don't line up, lots of T-intersections, and that's not good on a major roadway. So we know, working with the county, that we either have to restrict some of those sometime in the future, or realign them to line up. So when you look at Inwood, it's pretty close to some intersection on the south side, so we have started some conversations with the Dodge Nature Center to, you know, potentially have some options to realign Inwood Avenue, in which case you could make those intersections work better, and it would maintain up to Ravine Parkway. The other option is if we decide Inwood isn't really necessary as a through road from Ravine Parkway to 70th, we still need a portion of it, because in the Highlands Development, south of 68th Street, there's about 70 homes, that that's their second access point is on the Inwood. And from a public safety standpoint, we can't fully remove Inwood, because you lose that secondary access to those 70 homes. So as we continue to work through that, we do know that it's going to connect up to Ravine Parkway, one way or another, whether it's a through street, or it's just kind of a dead end and access point to Highland Hills.
Thank you. I will ask Councilmember Mills, or the mayor, or both, to correct me if I state this incorrectly, based on what the resident had mentioned. I believe her primary concern was where we see 65th connecting with Inwood. Is that going to be a major thoroughfare, or is that intended to simply be secondary access without a tremendous amount of additional traffic versus what's there today? Because I think her concern was, if that is going to be the primary method for people to get out, and then go down Inwood down to 70th Street, as you mentioned, there's going to be a lot of pain points there, especially for people who want to walk, people who are used to that area having a bit more of a rural feel. Can you address that, please? And did I—did I say it right? Did I miss something?
Go ahead, I'm gonna now.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Olson, that is the intent right now. So the way it's being set up, certainly people—it'll be connected, and you could use Inwood, but really the intent with Ravine Parkway is that's our east-west connector, it's going to have a higher speed limit, no homes on it, and as we develop the Kemp and the Waltersburg properties, that's really what we want people to be doing. So if they live in Calarosa, and they want to get down Jamaica to Cub Foods, we would see them using Ravine Parkway and go down Jamaica. That's really going to be the fastest way to do that. And then in the future, like I mentioned, if—as we continue to kind of deal with this area, work with Inwood, work with the county, you know, it may or may not be restrict or disconnect at 70th Street, but day one, we're not anticipating, you know, major changes in that traffic pattern.
I think one of the concerns, which you already addressed, was that getting onto 70th. I think there's a large concern of the amount of traffic that would come down Inwood, and then get on to 70th, and it being kind of a dangerous intersection. And I believe that that piece has been addressed, and you are working on that. So I know that was one of the large concerns that came out of that conversation, was that it would become this road that a lot of people out of the Calarosa would take down to 70th. And maybe for a small period of time, we may see a little bit of that, but I think you're correct, they're going to take Ravine, either one way or the other, more likely.
Certainly.
Yep. Are we good? I agree. It's—that's—that was the main issue, was just connectivity. And at least, that's how we took it. So I think, you know, we're addressing it. It's not intended, as we're saying here now, especially with the vacation of Sunny Hill now, even more so that it's not intended to be a major arterial. So—and will be interesting to see what you do with the realignment down in the other, as you were talking about the Dodge Nature Center, to try to realign intersections down down off of 70th in the future. So kind of an interesting thing.
Take a little piece of the woods there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Counsel, any other questions for staff at the moment? All right, I do know—we first of all, I'll check with the developer. Paul is representing the developer, Paul Tabone. Paul, is there anything that you wanted to add to the conversation this evening, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you all hear and see me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I don't have a whole lot to add, just want to say thanks for your support. Thank you to staff for helping us reach this point, and we're excited to wrap this community up. Interest continues to remain strong, and hopefully we'll be doing more business in the city of Cottage Grove in the future. So thanks again. I don't have anything to add, but I am available to add any questions, or answer any questions, if you have them at this time.
Fantastic. I'll first check with our council. Any questions for—Councilmember Dennis?
Not a—not a question, Mayor, but just—a just a feedback for Mr. Tabone. In the past, he's been very good to work with, and amenable to addressing some resident concerns. I know there were some things I worked with him on, and I just wanted to say I appreciated that, as I'm sure we all did. He's been a good guy and a good company to work with.
Yep, perfect. That's a beautiful development happening up there. It's amazing how fast you're putting houses up. It just boggles my mind. All right, seeing no other questions, at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the public hearing, and this is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on this item is welcome to do so at this time. And we don't have—it—we don't have anybody in the audience in front of me, but I believe Bonnie Madder is on our Zoom call here. And so Bonnie, if you would like to speak, I just would need you to state your name and address for the records, and then as—as the policy is, just limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello.
There you go, Bonnie. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Commiss—thank you very much, commissioners. I just want to take a few minutes just to share some comments, okay?
Absolutely.
So, this is regarding the hearing for vacating a portion of Inwood Avenue South, also known as Sunny Hill Drive, and I respectfully submit the following request. Please delay vacating the section of Inwood Avenue South, also known as Sunny Hill Drive, until the remainder of Ravine Parkway Road has been completed. That is, starting in the east at Jamaica Avenue, and ending in the west at Inwood Avenue North—excuse me, Inwood Avenue South. Point number one, in this way, homeowners in Calarosa Six will have access to Jamaica Avenue heading south via Military Road as it exists today. Point number two, this will also help alleviate the additional traffic that will now be using the Inwood Avenue South through-street, or cut across, from Ravine Parkway to 70th Street. The Inwood Avenue South, 70th Street intersection has many safety concerns for traffic trying to turn east onto 70th Street, especially when the ball fields are in use. The late afternoon sun makes it difficult to see oncoming traffic when looking to the west, and trying to make a left-hand turn onto 70th. People are coming—are they're driving at elevated speeds as they come over the hill from the west, heading east, and the ball field spectators parked cars along 70th Street further impede sightlines. Inwood Avenue is a city street. 70th Street is a county road. To date, nothing formal has been put into the plan for either the city of Cottage Grove, or Washington County to address and/or upgrade this intersection. It is my understanding that this will take years. Point number three, assumption is that Calarosa Six will have the same issues as Calarosa Five with fire equipment access. Some type of fire equipment access will need to be added, just like the fire equipment access in the Calarosa Five Townhouse development. That fire equipment access would have to be off of Sunny Hill Drive, also known as Inwood Avenue. Has this been addressed, and if so, how will this be handled? And then point number four, the STANTEC letter to Ryan Burfine dated December 8, 2020, under preliminary plat comments, said number one, point A, Lennar will be responsible for removing the entire Inwood Avenue street section from Ravine Parkway to the Woodbury border, as required in the Calarosa preliminary plat conditions of approval. And number one B, Lennar will be required to regrade and reestablish Inwood Avenue from Ravine Parkway to the Woodbury border. For the reasons stated above, please accept this request for the portion of Sunny Hill Drive/Inwood Avenue from Ravine Parkway to Military Road to remain open until the Ravine Parkway Road project is completed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bonnie, can I get you—Ms. Madder, can I get you to state your address, just for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're okay.
6649 Inskip Avenue South.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any—Ryan, do you want to—Mr. Burfine, you want to take some of those comments there?
I can take those. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did write these down. If I do miss anything, just please let me know. I will go to a different image here, talking through some of these questions, some of the more specific ones. So in terms of fire access, we want two ways to get to a house from a public street. So when you look at the Calarosa Six development, you've got on the right side of your screen, that's a connection down to Ravine Parkway, and on the left side, you've got 60th Street that will connect into 60th Street going to the west. So we already have multiple ways to get in and out of this neighborhood, just through the natural roadway network. So Inwood Avenue north of Ravine Parkway is not required for that secondary access. Thinking about, you know, that area down to the south, we've got two parts. We want to do what we're doing, you know, the correct thing to do with the development project. You know, when—when we have an impact to a roadway, or a roadway that's not needed, whatever that may be, we want to deal with that at that time. That way, we can properly incorporate this right-of-way into the lots. You know, we don't have issues where we come back 10 years later and say, hey, we're giving you this land that you didn't want, and you didn't realize. Now it can be properly incorporated into the plat. So it is a more—I guess, it's a better time to incorporate these—these vacations at that time. Thinking of traffic patterns, you know, if someone does want to get south from Calarosa, they're really going to go south. You know, we won't see a driver going up to Military Road and coming down Jamaica Avenue. It is a gravel roadway section in Woodbury, not improved in any way. And Woodbury did have some serious concerns about, you know, any additional traffic on that roadway. At such a time that they develop in that area, that's when we're going to see those local roadway connections and some more connectivity. And then in regards to the intersection down 70th Street, this is something that we actually are going to start working with the county on. I had a conversation last week with the county engineer and their staff, and we're going to start looking at this access management, and really some of the specific ones like Inwood. So it is something the county's aware of, and we had a pretty good conversation, me and our assistant city engineer, last week during a meeting. So that is something we'll be addressing going forward. And in terms of any specific sightline issues, you know, if we have use of the park, or people are parking on Inwood, you know, that's something we can look at and see, you know, is there something we have to address that we're creating some sightline issues during big events? So we can look at that as well.
Well, and I think—Bonnie, you mentioned—I think you mentioned parking on 70th, is that correct? I don't know, she—maybe she can't. She said she lost audio. I—I was going to say, public safety can deal with that, because in technical—well, not even technical terms, in actual terms, you're not supposed to be parking along 70th Street anywhere, there is no parking signs, so that would be something that we can—
Correct. Yes.
Yep, okay, you're back, good. So that is something we can do from a public safety standpoint, because there is not supposed to be parking. And I know what you're talking about there, because I actually see it even recently with the sledding hill there. People, it can be pretty hairy coming across that hill there. I don't know if you—I hope you heard what our Public Works Director was mentioning. There is a plan to work literally with the county on 70th and the access issues that are along 70th, because of the way they're—they're staggered. And so one of the suggestions he was making is there might be a new realignment of that road that would line it up differently, maybe almost like a bend in the road that would then connect it to the road—the city street across—it would be south of 70th Street. And so that is something that we're looking at. And I—I would tell you, too, on the—on the traffic situation, you know, as this develops, if —if traffic on Inwood— traffic on Inwood, which I believe that's really what you're concerned about, is that correct, Bonnie?
I'm, that, yes. I am really concerned about, I'm concerned about the traffic on Inwood. I'm concerned about the traffic, the intersection at 70th and Inwood. And I still don't, I would really like to understand when the completion of Ravine Parkway is really going to happen because it's just not realistic to think that people are going to go down Ravine Parkway as it exists today. They're going to go to Inwood Avenue, and they're going to take Inwood Avenue heading south. And that is my concern.
Okay.
And in addition to Calarosa 5, where there have been a number of, there's been a different density of housing that's been put out there. Now, in addition, you're going to have Calarosa 6. Those people are not in my, I don't think if you're going to take Ravine Parkway. I think they're going to take the straight shot because otherwise, all they do is they end up on Ravine Parkway, they go to Ideal, they wind a little bit up to Ideal, and then they, it's, they're just going to use Inwood Avenue South. That's my concern.
Okay.
So, one question, okay, really, when will Ravine Parkway, when will that road be completed between Jamaica and Inwood Avenue?
I think I can actually take that. We don't know.
Yeah.
And the reason I say we don't know is because there are two separate landowners that have to be willing sellers. As I do know one of those landowners, there's been multiple developers specifically coming in, I'm not sure about the other one, and they just haven't gotten to the point of a deal, if you will, so that we can make that connection. But our ultimate goal, if you're not aware of this, is that you literally will be able to get on Ravine Parkway off of 65th, and eventually, you could end up down by Walmart taking the ravine. That is the ultimate goal. So, that's going to loop basically the whole eastern side of the city. So, we can't, we can't force, and if we did, it would be bad for us, I guess, from a city standpoint, and taxes would be raised and so on for putting it. So, that's why we do these in sections when the developers come in, in this particular case, and that's what the next phase would be. And that's why we started with this particular Calarosa at the beginning here, working our way now going east. So, I know that's probably not necessarily what you wanted to hear, but I did want you to be aware of, you know, is, I mean, two months from now, a developer could come to us and say, we're interested, and then guess what? Then it starts going. But it's really, it's up to the landowners as willing sellers with a willing buyer to make that call.
And just one more question then. Why is it not possible to keep Inwood Avenue open all the way through to Military Drive until we get this other issue resolved?
You want to take one?
One thing I can add, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so really, the issue before you tonight is, you know, vacating this right-of-way north of Ravine Parkway. Allowing drivers to go north is not going to reduce traffic down to 70th Street, you know, just from a practical standpoint. Drivers, you know, they're not going to drive up to Military Road to come back south. Certainly, they could use that as a cut-through if they were going to Woodbury. That's not something we want to encourage. We really want them to use those main roads of Ravine Parkway to Hinton Avenue. But really, the issue for you tonight is a section north of Ravine Parkway, and the issue's down to the south has really been an ongoing thing, an ongoing discussion with the county over the years, that really closing Inwood north of Ravine Parkway has very little bearing on. But it is something we're definitely aware of, and like I said, we kind of reinvigorate those conversations with the county last week based on development that's occurring. So, it's definitely something we're going to be working on and really spending time on and not, you know, kicking that can down the road. We do want to focus on it and find a solution.
Absolutely. Okay. All right.
Thank you for your time.
You got it. Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. And just as an opportunity for folks who might be home watching this dialogue, I want folks to know and understand that we have a very intrinsic process that we use when we come up with, working with developers and ensuring that developments are put together in ways that make sense. The one question that was raised that wasn't addressed was, you know, is there going to be access for public safety? And so, our public safety team gets together with engineering, gets together with planning, gets together with the critical review team, and remember, these things go through our commissions. So, there literally are many, many different eyes, people that have expertise and experience that look at these plans, really before anything ever gets to the point where we're sitting here, being asked to approve something. So, I just wanted folks at home to know and understand that from a respectful position that we put an awful lot of work into identifying plans that meet the measured criteria. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, yeah, Councilmember Thede?
And just as a note, I guess, the other thing was is that Woodbury really doesn't want the additional traffic. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't there before because 60th, 60th Street, 60th Street, yeah, didn't extend out to Inwood, where with this final addition, it will. And so, what my understanding is that Woodbury says, well, we don't want all those people pouring out on this gravel road, and they certainly weren't in the position to upgrade the road and pave it and everything else, right?
Yep, that's correct, Councilmember Thede. Really, when that area develops, similar to what we're seeing here, you would see Sunny Hill vacated, is what Woodbury mentioned, and it would be really incorporated into a new development layout with new streets, which would have some connectivity to Cottage Grove.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't know how to raise my hand. Here, I found it there. I've raised my hand.
Okay.
Okay, 60th has to become, it can't, it's not, it doesn't go through to Inwood.
Right now, it doesn't.
It cannot, there has to be a, it says in the plans, there has to be a cul-de-sac there. It doesn't flow out onto 60th.
Do you want to answer it?
I can answer. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so on the image, you can see because Inwood's being vacated, we're accommodating a cul-de-sac for Sunny Hill Drive, and then this temporary hammerhead turnaround for 60th Street. If Inwood remained, they would connect, and you'd have that cut-through under a gravel road that really can't handle it, just from a practical perspective.
Okay. All right. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on open forum? I don't see anybody else on the list here. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the open forum, or the open forum, the public hearing portion of the meeting. And at this point, council, if you have any comments, yes, Councilmember Olson.
Thanks, Mayor. I waited for Ryan to sit down so that he could get back up.
Well, you did have that steak dinner tonight.
Yes, I'm very encouraged by the fact that we've already engaged in some dialogue with the county relative to the 70th Street intersection because that's been an issue that's been raised several times. So, thank you for that insight. I'm curious, in engineering world where you live, what would be a proposed controlled intersection tool that we could use for that intersection? I know it's awfully close to the roundabout on Jamaica Avenue, and it's also sort of in the middle of two hills that converge at the top. So, I don't know if a wood pole light is something you're thinking about. Can you maybe just expound on what might potentially work for that area?
Yep, certainly. Councilmember Olson, as Ms. Madder mentioned tonight, you know, part of the issue with Inwood is there is a hill there. So, we'll want to take a closer look at that as we plan out this intersection for the future, aligning with the city street, have good sightlines. You know, in the near term, there's about 6,500 cars a day on this road section, where we have like the wood pole signal down at Meadowgrass, I believe there's about 12,000. So, quite a bit more traffic that really drives that need to have a signal to allow cars to come out in a controlled fashion. So, in the near term, if we are able to start down a path of some projects to help address this intersection, you'd probably see it as just a side stop where cars still have sufficient gaps. And that signal is really about giving gaps. Once there's enough cars on the road, you need that signal. So, that's probably more realistic of sometime down the road, that would be a first option, would be like a wood pole signal as traffic increases and it, you know, requires that type of installation.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned Meadowgrass and even hardwood because that's kind of where we started with both of those intersections, was with kind of the basic wood pole concept, and then, you know, we went forward from there. So, that seems to make some sense, but, you know, I know you guys have models and things that you use for the gaps and the speed and all of that sort of thing. I was just curious about that, and I'll probably have another question as soon as you sit down again.
Sounds good. Thank you. Burnt some calories.
There you go. Council, any other questions then on this? All right. I don't see it up on the screen, at least I can't. We don't have screens up here, just if I feel. At this point, the council has an option to, I don't know if there's one motion or two.
There are several.
All right, that's what I thought. So, if somebody wants to take the first one, since I can't see it on here.
Did you want to start? Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-008, Vacating a Portion of Inwood Avenue South.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Mills, second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You want to do the next one?
Sure. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2021-009, Approving the Final Plat for Calarosa 6th Edition, which is a 29.33 acre residential development with 86 single-family lots.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Again, any discussion, council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You want to do number four?
I'll say, move that we approve the Calarosa 6th Edition Development Agreement with U.S. Home Corporation.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then we have our last one.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to adopt Resolution 2021-010, Approving the Calarosa 6th Edition Development Plans, dated October 27, 2020, prepared by Pioneer Engineering.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any conversation or discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks. I don't think they can speak now, but thank you, Bonnie, for, Madder, for participating, and the developer, Paul, for being here this evening.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, next, you're welcome, Bonnie. Bit awards, 10, there aren't none this evening. 11 is regular agenda. There is nothing additional this evening. Now, we're to council comments and requests, so we'll start with Councilmember Mills.
I'll pass, thank you.
There we go. All right, so should I go to Councilmember Thede? Look at, I threw a loop to him here.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a historic day in the history of the United States of America today. Today, Kamala Harris was inaugurated, along with Joe Biden, as his vice president, the first time we've ever had a female hold that elected office, and I just wanted to say how great that is. It is long overdue. I watched the inauguration today with my daughter, who was absolutely over-the-moon thrilled to see a female vice president get sworn in on the steps of the Capitol. My daughter's 16, she goes to Park High School, she's doing distance learning, and in her history class, they had a lengthy dialogue about this this morning. She has a nine o'clock class. So, when class was done, we spent some time just sort of chatting a little bit before she had to jump into her math class, and then, you know, we actually watched the event live. And, you know, I take a lot of pride in being a girl dad. I have a son as well. But, you know, being a girl dad is a pretty cool thing, and the fact that she was able to see that happen live in person and sit and chat about it with me today literally gave me goosebumps and gave me chills. So, I want to wish all the best to all of our elected leaders, in particular, our new president, our new vice president, all of the new senators and representatives who are now seated in Washington, D.C. We got a lot of hard work ahead of us, and I certainly know we'll do our part here in the city of Cottage Grove, but I wanted to acknowledge that historic moment and just speak briefly about how much it meant to me and to my daughter. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to mention that earlier tonight, we had an opportunity to go down and visit the River Oaks Golf Course, and we're very impressed by what we saw. There's been some hard work going on down there, and I don't want to ruin the surprise for anybody, but I do want to say to our community members that support this, remember, when we go to River Oaks as a community-owned business and support it, we hope to support ourselves. There's going to be some amazing changes and new opportunities coming down there as we get the golf season open, and I think there's going to be a fish fry. You may talk a little bit about that here coming up, I'm sure. But just really fine work, you know, pretty much every time I talk about that place down there and the people, I talk about how much pride I have in the work that they do, and it's very sincere. So, I just want to call that out tonight and give our community something to look forward to. We did have a profitable year at the golf course last year, even though we had faced challenges along with the rest of business and the COVID economy, things have really been going well. So, I just want to put that out there, and kudos to everybody involved with that process.
All right, there you go. So, a couple items that I thought I would share. You just touched upon the River Oaks Golf Course Event Center Eagles Bar and Grill. There is going to be, just like I'm sure everybody else is slowly opening, all of our restaurants are, I've had the pleasure of patronizing a variety of different restaurants since they've been open now over the last couple of weeks, and I love the support I'm seeing, both through messaging and such on Facebook, but also the people that are going in there and supporting these local businesses and all of our restaurants. So, I just wanted to say kudos to everybody for doing that. Please, if you're able to, please continue to support them, and we'll be doing similar situation down at River Oaks. One of the premier events, if you will, that people love to do down there is the fish fry. And so, as we get a little farther into February, we will be starting that process. We're going to do kind of a soft opening because we just remodeled it, we've done a lot of work down there. There will be a little bit of differences in the process because obviously, just like everybody else, we have to limit the number of people that can be in the facility. So, there will be a reservation system where you'll be able to call to make reservations at certain times so you can actually get in there. But you are going to be amazed at what you see in there, the food, what they've been doing down there on both the food side, but eventually, when the golf season reopens again, some of the changes at the golf course is absolutely, I know it blew all of us away this evening when we were down there to hear their business plan for the next basically five years. So, it's pretty cool. So, I want to mention that. Second thing is, we are going to be doing a State of the City this year again, COVID or no COVID, we're still doing it. That'll be on February 3 at 6:00 P.M. I'll be here in the council chambers, and people can watch it virtually through some different channels and opportunities. We'll get more to that, more out to everybody later. We will be really looking forward to what's coming in the future. One of the things which, of course, that we're going to be hearing a lot about, or you'll be hearing a lot about and discussing, is the future community center referendum in the city of Cottage Grove. So, if you're wondering what's going to happen with that and what the process is, obviously, there will be a lot of information that will be coming out. The city will be providing financial information, what it's going to cost, the average cost per household, all that kind of stuff, which the city can do, as well as what the design is going to look like, so you know literally what's going to be as part of this future community center and water park. And then, there'll be different groups or whatever if they're interested or want to be part of the opportunity to, you know, get the word out, so to speak. That'll be kind of its own separate thing that's not part of the city. So, I just wanted to mention that, that there is two sides to this, the city giving it out, telling people what it is and how much it's going to cost, and then there's, like all referendums, I guess, it's the rest, if people that want it can go out there and support it. Now, I say that because I also just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that we've been hearing and... hearing, and Councilmember Olson and I were on a conference call yesterday with the school district, that they appear to be having some financial difficulties, and I, I know there, there's a lot of info out there about press your school closing and, and reduction in programs and things like that. And I know there's a lot of people out there, because I've gotten the phone calls, I know council members have here too. You know, people are going, well, how can we be closing schools and having all these issues? And I know there's the COVID side of things, but, but we're growing like leaps and bounds. There's, all I would ask you to do as the general public, as we did, and that, ask good questions. Get involved, talk to your, talk to your school board members, make, send emails, do whatever you need to do to get the answers that you're looking for. And, you know, just like we would in our city and we will, going forward with the community center, anything else we do, we're very transparent, we want to be transparent, we want the public to know where the dollars are coming from, where they're going. And if you have questions about that, which we did, when we had our conversations with them and the processes and things like that, they're a public entity, we're a public entity, obviously two separate things, but we do got to work together, the cities of Cottage Grove and Woodbury and Central Park, Newport, all of us, because people move to a city because, not just because of the city and its parks and that, we like, that's part of it, of course, but it's the school district. And so it's very important that the school district looks, we, we support them, they support us, but it is absolutely in your right as, as homeowners and families here in Cottage Grove and the rest of the district to ask the tough questions, understand what's going on. Because there was a lot of things that we learned about that we weren't necessarily aware of. There's things that maybe we disagree on with the school board, but ultimately, that's their decision to make, it's not the city's. We can just give our two sets where it's, just like every single citizen in Cottage Grove and, and the rest of the district can do the same. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I believe tomorrow night, depending on when you're watching this, tomorrow night, which is Thursday, January 21, is when the school board is going to be meeting, and it's virtually again, I believe, that, to make some early recommendations. From what I understand from talking to them last night, any discussion regarding closing a school would actually go through a public hearing process, so I just wanted to share with you tomorrow night, they won't be like, it's closed, it's done, it's over. There will be more public input opportunities going forward to make those determinations. And then lastly, as it relates to referendum questions, you know, we've stated all along, our intent was to go to referendum this fall, and that intent is still there. We, I guess, I would say, I was a little disheartened or disappointed to know that they may be going to referendum question in the fall. That's, that was news to us until recently. But again, that's a separate entity, but, but part of our community, and so the public will have to make its determination of, of what they want to do from a referendum standpoint for either the, and/or the community center or the school district. So make your voices heard, ask lots of questions, and if you don't necessarily like the answers of the questions, you can ask more questions, but in the end, it is going to be their determination, their, their decision on which direction they're going to move. So with that, that was it for my comments for this evening. This evening, we, we did have a workshop prior to, as you heard, down at River Oaks Golf Course, just to get an update on what's going on there. So we don't have a workshop afterwards here, either open or closed, so 13 and 14, we're off. And so we're down to 15, which is adjournment. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.